Take your seats, please. Let's get the show on the road. Okay, this is Collins meeting order. The Champaign County Board meeting of the whole for Finance, Justice, Social Services, Policy Personnel and Affinements. It's Tuesday, August 14th, 2012. The time is 6:02. Roll call, please.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michael. Mitchell.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
What's up?
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Hammond.
Anderson.
Here.
Binsel. Berksen.
Here.
Betts.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coort.
Friend.
Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler.
Here.
Kirk.
Here.
Langenhaim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Seek approval of the minutes for the meeting of the whole for June 12th, 2012.
So moved.
Move by Mr. James, second by Mr. Esri. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Public participation. Mr. James Kilgore, you're up first.
Are we doing the agenda?
Yeah, we're gonna do the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I checked out the wrong one. Thank you, Mr. James. Seek approval of the agenda and the addenda.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Langenhaim, second by Mr. McGinty. Discussion. Mr. McGinty.
I would like to remove as the Chair of Finance, item F1 concerning the revenue anticipation notes for the nursing home and ask that the county administrator and the county treasurer, who is not here this evening, prepare an impact analysis with regard to our cash position with General Corporate and return one month from, uh, next month at Finance Committee of the whole with such a report so that we can make a more informed decision on this issue.
Second.
Is there any, uh, is there any objection? Okay, see none? We can take it off the agenda?
Thank you.
All right, any other changes? I'd like to make one quick change. I'd like, since Mr. Richards is not here and Mr. Carter has already consented this, I'd like to move, uh, Justice and Social Services to the front and we'll just accept those and place those on file. Any objections to that? Want to take mine? Okay. All right, now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now, public participation is for real. Mr. Kilgore. Get the pleasure of being announced twice.
Good evening, James Kilgore, 511 South Draper, Champaign. I wanted to speak a little bit about the jail and the impending decision that the board has to make concerning the employment of the consultant for the needs assessment. I think there's a number of issues that are quite important on this. One of the first points is that, to date, apart from the survey that Champaigner Benicis and for Peace and Justice have done in two districts, there's been no real solicitation of the public's view on the construction of a jail. So I think it's, and in that particular poll, only 7% of the people that we polled actually expressed support for the jail and 79% expressed support for their right to vote on a decision of this magnitude. So I think it's very important in terms of looking at which consultant to employ that they have a comprehensive program for consultation with the public in terms of dealing with the jail. Secondly, I'm concerned about the connections between consultants doing needs assessments and architects, remembering that should $20 million be allocated or $20 million plus for a jail, that that's an irreversible decision and it should be taken, um, not by someone doing a needs assessment who has a hidden agenda of trying to get further work for themselves. And I'm particularly interested in considering the idea that the actual costs of a jail, although they may be $20 million for construction, in the long term, the costs are much greater in terms of continuing to operate the facility, particularly on an increased scale, which is what is going to happen in this plan. And when you, when we add resources to the jail, we find that we're also constructing a community that becomes reliant on the jail for their income. And if we look at what's happening right now with the proposal from Governor Quinn to close down Tam's Prison, which has been declared by many people to be a violation of human rights, at least in terms of what goes on in the supermax side of that, we find trade unions and we find communities who are mobilizing against the closure of the prison. And I think we can look five or 10 years down the road in Champaign County if we spend $20 million on the jail, sinking the county further into debt. And we also find that nationally, the trend is to decarcerate, to put less people in jail. We can see a scenario like that happening in the county whereby the county may want to cut back on who's in the jail and reduce expenditure, but they will have created a community of interests, a community who is financially dependent on that jail for their income, and they will be, and they will be forced to do battle with people from the community, with people from the unions, and other people who are dependent on that jail for their income. So I think we need to think of this in the long term as well as the short term and consider that the decision that you make in terms of which consultant to employ has very much long-term implications as well as a short-term, three-month contract implications. Thank you.
Ms. Rachel Schwartz.
Hello. I wanted to talk about, very briefly, about something in the packet related to the General Corporate Fund and the loan to the nursing home. If you look at your packets on page 131, it looks something like that. Um, you'll see, um, the fund balance and underneath that fund balance, there is an outstanding loan to the nursing home of roughly $333,000 and a little bit more. Um, I think we're all aware of the millions of dollars that went from the General Corporate Fund to the nursing home before MPA took over in 2008. We don't need to go over that, but the fact is that many of these loans have been written off. The existing loan that's remaining is 333. Uh, what I'm concerned about is since 2010, the nursing home has actually been making transfers to the General Corporate Fund of over $300,000 a year. And this is to pay for the $4 million cost overrun bonds that is taken out by the county obligated by a sales tax, but according to Ms. Bucis' report in the budget, is actually being paid for by the nursing home via transfer from the nursing home to the General Corporate Fund every year. So to make a long story short, I think that if the nursing home has been paying over $300,000 a year since 2010, they more than paid back the $333,000 outstanding loan. This thing should be taken off the books. Um, I have my reservations about the nursing home continuing to pay for a loan that is a construction bond. It's not theirs, but that's something for a different time period. My point for today is the way it's reported, it appears that there is an outstanding loan that was not paid. I think it was. Thank you.
Robert Michael Doyle.
My name is Robert Michael Doyle. Last Tuesday, just before the Champaign County Board meeting began, I distributed to every board member a letter from the UP Center of Champaign County. UP stands for Uniting Pride in the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgendered, Questioning, and Allied Community. It is headquartered in the old Urbana Post Office Building just north of Lincoln Square. For the benefit of the general public, I will now read that letter. It's addressed, it was addressed to each individual board member by name. Attached is a proposed proclamation designating September 8th, 2012, as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgendered Pride Day in Champaign County. A similar document has already been signed by the mayors of Champaign and Urbana. The presidents of all 21 village boards in our county have been asked to do likewise. If you have any questions about this proposal, you may speak with me before or after any of your August meetings, or you may call me anytime at 217-344-0910. To learn more about Pride Fest, go to unitingpride.org. Thank you for your time and attention. Sincerely, Robert Michael Doyle. Now I will read the attached proposed. Proposed proclamation designating September 8th, 2012, as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgendered Pride Day. Whereas, a significant number of the adult population of Champaign County are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgendered, and whereas, lesbians, gay men, bisexual persons, and transgendered people make numerous contributions to the artistic, commercial, educational, political, religious, and social life of Champaign County. And whereas, since the mid-1970s, some Champaign County residents have celebrated LGBT pride every year. And whereas, since June 1st, 2011, over 140 couples have obtained and completed civil union licenses from the Champaign County Cook, Clerk. And whereas, the majority of these licenses were issued to same-sex couples, some of whom are raising children together. And whereas, the third annual Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual Pride Festival will be held on Saturday, September 8th, 2012, from noon to 2:00 a.m. at Lincoln Square in Urbana, with this year's theme being Community Pride. Now therefore, is proclaimed by the Champaign County Board that that date is designated as LGBT Pride Day in the county of Champaign. During public petition last week, I spoke a few words and emphasized that I especially wanted to hear from board members who were not prepared to vote for our proposed proclamation. I remain for the entire meeting, including the long executive session. No board member spoke to me about our proposed proclamation. Not until yesterday did I learn that the majority party caucus had already voted not to put our proposal on today's agenda, even before I spoke to the board. Not even the majority of the board members were present at that particular caucus. The remainder of my remarks tonight will represent my personal opinions, not those of the UP Center or any other LGBT group. Since the founding of Champaign County until very recently, Champaign County LGBT residents have been subjected to unjust discrimination and vicious persecution by all units of county government. In 1995 and 1996, this county voted, board voted twice against prohibiting discrimination in county government employment, thereby encouraging the continuation of such injustices by private employers. Although this action was much later reversed by the board, to date, there is no comparable protection for gendered persons in county policy. Fortunately, all LGBT persons are today protected by Illinois state law. As an institution, Champaign County Government still needs to make up for its past hatred and persecution of its LGBT residents. The proposed proclamation would have been an inexpensive way to do so. If the Champaign County NAACP, or the Central Illinois Islamic Center, or any other minority organization had asked you for something, would you have refused to even put it on your agenda? I think not. But then we are just a bunch of fags, dykes, and trannies to way too many of you. Since the vote last summer to designate July 2011 as Respect and Celebrate Civil Union's Month, you voted for two other proclamations. One was for Martin Luther King Day. Because, I was told, you give out King Awards. Why don't you give out Harvey Milk Awards? He was an actual county board member from another state murdered while performing his duties and was elected county official. You also voted for National Police Week. Although it no longer happens, Champaign County deputies and other local police used to harass and hurt LGBT people. A number of their victims are still living in Champaign County and have told me their stories. When are you going to acknowledge these victims of your former police force? I have only one bit of consolation for my fellow LGBT and allied citizens. In a few months, about half of the current members of this Champaign County Board will be gone. At that time, it will probably say good riddance.
Brian Dolaner.
Good evening. My name is Brian Dolaner, and I wanted to also speak on the issue of the county jail and here again to remind folks of the importance of analyzing race and the role that race plays in determining who ends up in the county jail. Uh, there's been a series of articles that have been written and published. Uh, we provided links to them on our website for the Independent Media Center. It's UCIMC.org. These are articles produced by journalist Jeff Kelly Lowenstein out of Chicago, working for a Spanish-English newspaper called Hoya Newspaper. And he's been digging up a lot of interesting information about our Champaign County here. Uh, in particular, he's been looking at the arrest records for both Urbana and Champaign and found that of the total arrest records, while African-Americans represent around 15%, 16% of populations in Champaign and Urbana, they're overwhelmingly those who are arrested. In Urbana, 49% of all arrestees are black. That's almost half of all arrests are of African-Americans. In Urbana, presumably the more liberal of the two towns. Uh, in Champaign, all arrests, among all arrests, African-Americans make up 41%. Um, in Urbana, 49%, rather, in Urbana, 61% of drug arrests are of African-Americans in Urbana. In Champaign, for the charge, felony possession of marijuana, that's 30 grams or more, 75% of those are African-American. Of course, we know in a college town, you know, blacks aren't the only ones smoking grass, right? It's not hard to find or see up on campus. Um, so it's clear that African-Americans are being targeted. Uh, resisting arrest charges, 80% of them are African-American, again. So as to determine who ends up in the county jail, it's important that we go back and look through these records. We shouldn't have to go waiting for a Spanish-speaking newspaper to dig them up. Uh, we have folks in town who should be doing this job, other newspaper outlets, and the county should be doing this work itself. Thank you.
Is there any other public participation? See none, we'll close out and we'll go on to announcements or communications and announcements. Ms. Coort.
I have an announcement to make. On August 13th, 2012, we received a letter from the office of the governor as far as the effort of the 2009 Illinois job, um, now capital program. Um, this resource will come from a statewide program of $100 million to improve local growth. Our here will be $357,472, and you can see that outside the end of October, this year. And, um, in front of the non-fiduciary, uh, fifth part.
Very good. Other announcements? I have one of, I want to out there referring to Mr. Doyle's remarks. I did consult with Mr. Jay, the Chair of the Republican Caucus, about putting his proclamation on the, on the agenda, and I believe that Mr. Jay said he'd rather not see it on the agenda. Okay, um, we're done with that. Let's move on to, uh, Policy and Personnel. Sorry, um, Justice, Social Services. We have a number of items to put, uh, to, uh, to accept, place, and file. A report from Animal Control, Emergency Management Agency, Head Start, Probation Code Services, and Public Defenders. The motion to accept, place, and file?
I'll make it.
Move by Ms., by Ms., uh, Ms. Grandma Patty, going to resign. Ms. Petrie's second, and Mr. James. Discussion.
Me, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. They'll take care of Justice, Social Services. Um, move on to Finance. Mr. McGinty. Uh, one thing I want to point out is that there's a list of the election judges at that end. If you were to start taking a look at that and pass them all the way through, the item is on the, uh, I just, no, just look, just look. Just the expression.
First up on Finance is a report from our outside auditor, Clifton Larson Allen. Now Hope Wheeler with, uh, with that firm is here.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm sitting up here tonight because I brought up, I have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to run through that hopefully you can see that might guide you through the reports issued a little better. Um, this is our second year in the contract. I was here last year, if you recall. Our name was Clifton Gunderson then. We did have a merger January 2nd, just to explain that name change. We're Clifton Larson Allen now. But I am the partner on the county audits for the second year here. Um, just timeline-wise, wanted to explain, I talked about that last year some. We did complete the audit one month earlier this year. First year was always a little more difficult, second year. Um, we were able, we understood the systems more, got through things a little quicker, and were able to finish by the end of June. So these reports are dated the end of June. What I'm going to run through here, table of contents, but jump right into one of the required communications from the auditors. I believe this letter is in your audit, in your packets there that you have. But this is a letter that's specifically to the Finance Committee to report how the audit went, to answer questions of the Finance Committee. And some of the highlighted bullet points within that letter are explained here. There was one new significant accounting policy implemented during the year. It was a new required GASB, or governmental accounting standard, called GASB 54, and it related to fund balance reporting. So if you laid out your audit report from last year and compared it to this year, you would see a difference in the fund balance section. There were changes in the way, um, you had to classify your fund balance being certain, additional fund balances are now labeled as restricted, and then some can be committed by, by board action, and some can be assigned. Lengthy list of definitions, those are all in the actual county audit report, which I think, I think the county audit report was emailed to you earlier. I don't think it's part of that packet. The second item there, significant accounting estimates, just like to share once again with the Finance Committee, that in, in the accounting world, often estimates have to be made. They are based on management's knowledge and experience and trends, et cetera. We did not, there are not any significant estimates as a part of your audit. If there were, we'd point them out here. There are some estimation processes, such as an allowance for doubtful accounts related to RPC loans is one example. Of course, deprecable lives of assets or estimates, but nothing of financial significance we wanted to point out here. Third item, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Attached to the letter addressed to the Finance Committee from Clifton Larson Allen, we attached any adjustments we oppose or propose as part of the audit. We actually did not propose any adjustments that were posted to your books. So that is, I will tell you, that is rare with the other counties and governments I audit. Um, a lot of times, we have quite a few adjusting entries as part of the audit process. Secondly, the uncorrected misstatements. We do have thresholds we use, and if we do find some items that need adjusted or should be adjusted, but they're below a certain threshold, we can pass on them, but we have to summarize those on forms. If those get large enough, it does require an adjustment to be made to your books. Those passed adjustments are attached. We do have about five of those. They are attached to this letter. They are for various items, such as, uh, we found some additional liabilities that should be recorded at the end of the fiscal year. Um, when the auditor's office records liabilities at the end of the year, they do use a threshold because there's such a large amount of invoices to look at. They don't record all of them under a certain dollar amount. Well, we accumulated those and show those there as a potential adjustment. There was also an adjustment related to the nursing home that came in really late, an additional receivable and payable, but they, they netted out to a really insignificant number. So that was a passed adjustment. It was not posted. Fourth item there, we would want to report to the Finance Committee if we had disagreements with management in the course of our audits. Um, we did not have any disagreements with management as we worked through the audit process or the reporting process. Last item there, difficulties encountered. Once again, if, if there were significant difficulties in the audit process, we would explain those here. Um, in fact, the county, actually, all the different departments we worked with have been very cooperative over the past two years here, we've, as we've conducted the audit. All right, the next page here. Wanted to go through, there's a separate two-page letter. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm not to that yet. Going to go over the audit findings here. They are found in two different places. This, this page of finding is actually found in the, in the audit report that you received, I believe via email, near the back of that report. If, for future reference, they start on page 264, if you don't have those in front of you. Just to go through these findings, um, there were two additional findings last year that were dropped off, actually, I'm sorry, one finding last year. It was related to the Circuit Clerk's Office and improving some controls over the bank reconciliation process. That control, they did immediately institute what we recommended there, and they did improve that process, so that finding was removed. This year, we didn't have any overall financial statement findings such as that. We had these three findings, which related to the federal funding testing. As we test the federal programs, we go through a process to select what programs we need to test. The majority of the programs tested are through RPC because that's where the larger grants are, and also Access Initiative. These three findings do all relate to Access Initiative grants. The first one there is we noted some unallowable costs being charged to the grant. Interest, credit card interest, or any kind of interest is specifically disallowable. You can see, it was not a significant dollar amount, it was $642, but these are the types that we have to report, any, anything we find, regardless of the dollar amount. The second finding there, related to the matching requirements. I will state that they did meet the matching requirements that are required by the federal source, but there were errors in the calculations, of which they now know the process of how to calculate the match, and it is being done properly now. The third finding there. Yes?
Tom, do you have a question?
I do. I called you, I think, to interrupt you, but when you said you were required to report, like this credit card issue, you're reporting it as part of your finding. Are you reporting it to the entity that granted the grant?
The, the entity that granted the grant is, requires the audit, so they get a copy, a full copy of the audit. So yes, I don't specifically, but the county submits this to the granting agency.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, feel free to interrupt me. Then the last finding there, proper control over cash management. Once again, a federal requirement to minimize the time elapsed between the receipt of federal funds and the expenditure of them. This, this is a challenging one. The state, I know, gets this finding written against them, where it's difficult. In Access Initiative's case, I will say that they were sent money unrequested. They didn't want to send it back, not knowing when they'd get it back again. But it does trigger that you're not allowed to really have a lot of federal funds sitting on hand until you are going to be expending them. So that was a repeat finding from last year. It is being worked down because they are getting closer to being on a reimbursement basis, but that also creates cash difficulties for them. These three findings are reported in our federal opinion requirements at the back of the financial statements. They are not significant enough findings. There are different levels of findings. One's material weakness. These were reported as significant deficiencies rather than material weaknesses, and they did not change our overall opinion on your federal funding and the expenditures of your federal funding. It is overall still a clean, clean opinion.
Um, we want to finance, Mr. McGinty. Uh, one thing I want to point out is that there's a list of the election judges at that end. If you were to start taking a look at that and pass them all the way through, the item is on the, uh, I just, no, just look, you said, just look, just the expression.
First up on finance is a report from our outside auditor, Clifton Larson Allen. Now, Hope Wheeler with, uh, with that firm is here.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. I'm sitting up here tonight because I brought up, have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to run through that hopefully you can see that might guide you through the reports issued a little better. Um, this is our second year in the contract. I was here last year, if you recall. Our name was Clifton Gunderson then. We did have a merger January 2nd, just to explain that name change. We're Clifton Larson Allen now. But I am the partner on the county audits for the second year here. Um, just timeline wise, wanted to explain, I talked about that last year some. We did complete the audit one month earlier this year. First year was always a little more difficult, second year, um, we were able, we understood the systems more, got through things a little quicker, and were able to finish by the end of June. So these reports are dated the end of June. What I'm going to run through here, table of contents, but jump right into one of the required communications from the auditors. I believe this letter is in your audit, in your packets there that you have. But this is a letter that's specifically to the finance committee to report how the audit went, to answer questions of the finance committee. And some of the highlighted bullet points within that letter are explained here. There was one new significant accounting policy implemented during the year. It was a new required GASB, or governmental accounting standard called GASB 54, and it related to fund balance reporting. So if you laid out your audit report from last year and compared it to this year, you would see a difference in the fund balance section. There were changes in the way, um, you had to classify your fund balance being certain, additional fund balances are now labeled as restricted, and then some can be committed by, by board action, and some can be assigned. Lengthy list of definitions, those are all in the actual county audit report, which I think, I think the county audit report was emailed to you earlier. I don't think it's part of that packet. The second item there, significant accounting estimates, just like to share once again with the finance committee, that in, in the accounting world, often estimates have to be made. They are based on management's knowledge and experience and trends, et cetera. We did not, there are not any significant estimates as a part of your audit. If there were, we'd point them out here. There are some estimation processes, such as an allowance for doubtful accounts related to RPC loans is one example. Of course, deprecable lives of assets or estimates, but nothing of financial significance we wanted to point out here. Third item, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Attached to the letter addressed to the finance committee from Clifton Larson Allen, we attached any adjustments we oppose or propose as part of the audit. We actually did not propose any adjustments that were posted to your books. So that is, I will tell you, that is rare with the other counties and governments I audit. A lot of times, we have quite a few adjusting entries as part of the audit process. Secondly, the uncorrected misstatements. We do have thresholds we use, and if we do find some items that need adjusted or should be adjusted, but they're below a certain threshold, we can pass on them, but we have to summarize those on forms. If those get large enough, it does require an adjustment to be made to your books. Those past adjustments are attached. We do have about five of those. They are attached to this letter. They are for various items, such as, uh, we found some additional liabilities that should be recorded at the end of the fiscal year. Um, when the auditor's office records liabilities at the end of the year, they do use a threshold because there's such a large amount of invoices to look at. They don't record all of them under a certain dollar amount. Well, we accumulated those and show those there as a potential adjustment. There was also an adjustment related to the nursing home that came in really late, an additional receivable and payable, but they, they netted out to a really insignificant number. So that was a past adjustment. It was not posted. Fourth item there, we would want to report to the finance committee if we had disagreements with management in the course of our audits. Um, we did not have any disagreements with management as we worked through the audit process or the reporting process. Last item there, difficulties encountered. Once again, if, if there were significant difficulties in the audit process, we would explain those here. Um, in fact, um, the county, actually, all the different departments we worked with have been very cooperative over the past two years here, we've, as we've conducted the audit. All right, the next page here, wanted to go through, there's a separate two-page letter. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm not to that yet. Going to go over the audit findings here. They are found in two different places. This, this page of finding is actually found in the, in the audit report that you received, I believe via email, near the back of that report. If, for future reference, they start on page 264, if you don't have those in front of you. Just to go through these findings, um, there were two additional findings last year that were dropped off, actually, I'm sorry, one finding last year. It was related to the circuit clerk's office and improving some controls over the bank reconciliation, reconciliation process. That control, they did immediately institute what we recommended there, and they did improve that process, so that finding was removed. This year, we didn't have any overall financial statement findings such as that. We had these three findings, which related to the federal funding testing. As we test the federal programs, we go through a process to select what programs we need to test. The majority of the programs tested are through RPC, because that's where the larger grants are, and also Access Initiative. These three findings do all relate to Access Initiative grants. The first one there is we noted some unallowable costs being charged to the grant, interest, credit card interest, or any kind of interest is specifically disallowable. You can see, it was not a significant dollar amount, it was $642, but these are the types that we have to report any, anything we find regardless of the dollar amount. The second finding there, related to the matching requirements. I will state that they did meet the matching requirements that are required by the, the federal source, but there were errors in the calculations, of which they now know the process of how to calculate the match, and it is being done properly now. The third finding there. Yes?
Tom, do you have a question?
I do. When you said you were required to report like this credit card issue, you're reporting it as part of your finding, are you reporting it to the entity that granted the grant?
The, the entity that granted the grant is, requires the audit, so they get a copy, a full copy of the audit. So yes, I don't specifically, but the county submits this to the granting agency.
Thank you.
Yeah, feel free to interrupt me. Then, the last finding there, proper control over cash management. Once again, a federal requirement to minimize the time elapsed between the receipt of federal funds and the expenditure of them. This, this is a challenging one. The state, I know, gets this finding written against them, where it's difficult. In Access Initiative's case, I will say that they were sent money unrequested. They didn't want to send it back, not knowing when they'd get it back again. But it does trigger that you're not allowed to really have a lot of federal funds sitting on hand until you are going to be expending them. So that was a repeat finding from last year. It is being worked down because they are getting closer to being on a reimbursement basis, but that also creates cash difficulties for them. These three findings are reported in our federal opinion requirements at the back of the financial statements. They are not significant enough findings. There are different levels of findings. One's material weakness. These were reported as significant deficiencies rather than material weaknesses, and they did not change our overall opinion on your federal funding and the expenditures of your federal funding. It is overall still a clean, clean opinion.
There's another question. Jan, do you have a question?
Well, if I remember on the access funds, the first year funding, they got their funding late by about three quarters of a year. I mean, does it work the other way too?
No. And, yeah. Right.
For that first year funding.
Yeah, understand. And they couldn't start the program or hire the people until that funding came in. All right, the, this page of findings is related to a separate communication. We call it the management letter. It's a two-page document that I believe is in your packets. Um, these issues don't rise to the finding level being shown in the actual bound audit report, but they're just other items we wanted to bring to county board and finance committee and management's attention. The first item here is related to information technology. For those of you that were here last year, this finding is essentially identical to last year. Those are issues that are IT. We, we have a separate IT auditor that comes in and looks, looks at the IT functions, and there wasn't really any changes from last year with, with these issues. I know they have been discussed and, and considered, and there are reasons they haven't been acted on yet. Did I see that sign? Second finding there, this was in here last year, worded a little bit differently this year, just relates to, we found for the second year now, there is information that comes in that needs recorded in the financial statements, accrual entries that need made to record all of your liabilities as of November 30th. Some of that information isn't coming in until the audit process is almost over and the reports are being written. So that just really creates some difficulties in completing the audit and auditor's office completing the financial statements. So we just recommend there that, um, the county auditor's offices, office work with the different departments to get a good process in place to get that information into the auditor's office on a timely basis, so all of those liabilities can be recorded. In the end, you know, it did happen, but it was just happening very late in the process. Last item there, this was a new one this year. We noted when we were auditing the county clerk's office, um, some things that didn't, didn't tie out, and what we found then, and looking back, what, there were two deposits of funds that were made into the wrong account at the county clerk's office. And while these, it was, I want to say around $20,000 overall to the county, not a significant dollar amount, but the point here is you need to make sure you have an internal control in place to prevent these from happening, to catch them when they happen, because this was six to eight months after the fact when we found this. Okay. This section I'm going to go through pretty quickly because it's referencing pages in, in the audit report that you, I don't think most of you have with you. Um, but for future reference, if you want to go back to these pages, page 20 of the audit report is the thux of our audit. It is our audit report, and it does state, states, and I want to say the, I have it flagged here, the fourth paragraph, this does state, and third, that in our opinion, these financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Page 22 is management discussion and analysis. That, that handful of pages there is a good summary for people to go look at, rather than the 300-page document. That really takes the document, summarizes it down. That's drafted by, I think, Deb and Carol and auditor's office, and really summarizes the financial statements for the year. So it's a nice analysis of the year. Page 34 is the government-wide financial statements. Pointing these out just because these include, these are on the full accrual basis, so all liabilities are there, um, and all receivables. In the full accrual, we record anything that is owed to the county at the end of the fiscal year, whereas on page 36, you switch to modified accrual statements. These are shown at the, on the fund basis, and there, the modified accrual basis does not record all the receivables. So if money is late coming in from the state, they are not recorded in the fund financial statements. That's in accordance with, um, generally accepted accounting principles for governments. And I show up there on the government-wide statements on the full accrual basis, there's a column for all governmental funds, and then there's a separate column for business-type funds, which is the nursing home. Total assets there, 179 million. Total government-wide liabilities of 96 million with net assets of 83 million at the, at November 30, 2011. Change in net assets or the net revenues over expenditures on the full accrual basis this year was the 1.2 million dollars. On the modified accrual basis, just want to point out, I have some slides here that show some of the information from those modified accrual statements. This chart here shows, and some of this is very similar to what you see in that management and discussion analysis in the audit report, but this shows your major revenue sources for the governmental funds, so this does not include the nursing home, and how 2011 compared to 2010. 2011 is blue, if you can see it, and it's on the left-hand side, and 2010 is red. So you can see for each of these major areas, including property taxes, intergovernmental, including state grants, federal grants, um, sales tax, things like that, all of these are fairly comparable when you look at 2010 to 2011. And at the top, we show 2011 is the 78 million 335 versus 2010, 78 million 461. So very consistent year to year, not any major swings. This slide, once again, shows expenditures on the modified accrual basis. So we have recorded, or the auditor's office has recorded liabilities for any expenditures or due at November 30th, whether or not paid. Total expenditures for 2011 did go down to 80 million 280,000 for governmental funds. 2010, the 81 million 190,000. There, you can see these are broken down as they are in the, uh, financial statements here. General government being that first column with the 2011 on the left side and 2010 on the right, then justice and public safety, and I see a typo, of course, when I'm sitting here. Um, then health expenditures, then education, social services, et cetera. You can read those. Once again, you can see that most of them are really fairly consistent expenditures for 2011 compared to 2010. Some slight increases offset by, um, probably the decrease in the highways and bridges expenditures. Then this slide here just shows, we have to calculate what your major funds are. That's based on total assets for that fund, total liabilities and total expenditures. So these five funds here are what qualify as major funds this year, and that can change from year to year depending on, on those criteria. General fund is automatically always considered a major fund. You can see the fund balance in the general fund has significantly changed, um, from 2009 to up to 2011, where you have been able to cut back expenditures and build that fund balance back up some from where it was in 2009. Mental health fund there has just grown slightly over the three years. Developmental disability fund has stayed pretty constant over the past three years. And then the IMRF fund, IMRF fund did not qualify as a major fund last year, so last year you were seeing the motor fuel tax fund up there. This year, it did not qualify, but IMRF did. And then lastly, the regional planning commission. Regional planning commission, by the nature of the fund, it is really supposed to zero out. It's grant money coming in, it's supposed to be spent out. So while that looks a little strange, that is how it's supposed to look. Yes?
Use your mic, please.
Major fu, uh, would you define major fund, please?
Major fund, you, we have to look at the assets at the end of the year for each fund, the liabilities, the revenues and expenses, and there's a different percentage for each one. If it's over, and I don't remember all the percentages, I think it's in the audit report, but basically it's the larger funds. If they have a larger amount of expenditures or a larger amount of assets, then we have to show them as major funds. And then we opine on them or give an opinion on them separately. And then all the other funds that don't qualify as major get grouped together as other governmental funds, and there's an opinion on those funds. General fund, as I said, is always, um, has to be a major fund, and then the rest are determined by that, the size, how, how large their expenditures or their assets are at the end of the given year. You, there is also some judgment to that. If, um, if there's a certain fund that, um, county feels is major, that wants to be, they want shown as major each year, there is some, you can elect some to be major that don't qualify. But these all met the criteria. Going back, flipping back to this, just the last things I had, page 48 of the bound audited financial statements are the footnotes. Those are very comparable last year. That's just more required information supporting the, um, balance sheets and the income statements reported here. There were not really any new disclosures, other than some information about that new, um, fund balance reporting standard that was implemented. And then I just saw it, page 102 is something that may be of interest to the finance committee. That's where the comparative balance sheet starts. So if you want to look at certain funds, if you start at page 102, you can see the balance sheet for each fund this year compared to last year, and a budget to actual for each fund, um, this year compared to last year. Actually, just budget to actual. There is also an income statement comparing this year to last year. So I know sometimes it gets so summarized in the front, it's hard to decipher. So if you're looking for a certain fund, start back on page 102. Then page 249 is where the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is. That's where all your federal funds are accumulated, and then we, we look through those and go through calculations to determine which federal funds to test, and we already talked about, we list, we listed back there in those reports which funds were required to be tested this year. I think it was four or five of those major ones were required to be tested, and then our reports related to those are back in that section, of which I already went over the three findings. That was a very quick synopsis of this 300-page document, but if anyone has any questions, I can try to answer them.
Quiz.
Yes? Yes, there was not. Yeah, sure, I think you're aware of it.
Um, this is, this is my first one of these that I've been through, so it was a little bit of an educational experience for me. And we found our tax redemption fund, which of course is the fund that we're supposed to have enough funds in it available to pay all the property taxes that may be redeemed at any given moment to a tax buyer, was about 20,000 bucks short this year, and it took us a little bit of investigating, but apparently there was a deposit from about four years ago and a deposit from about 18 months ago that instead of, when the taxes were sold, instead of it being deposited into the tax redemption bank account, it was transferred into the county clerk vital fees bank account. So it was over in the treasurer's office in the wrong line item. We tracked it down over about four years, found it, transferred it back. So it'll look a little bit funny on our budget, particularly when we get to the end of this year. We figured out how the mistake happened. We've implemented an additional corrective proofing procedure to make sure it doesn't happen again, but there were some pretty old errors that we just turned up this year for whatever reason.
We blame his predecessor. So any other questions? Patsy.
Um, did I miss the email with this audit reporter? Is it up on the county website, or where, where do we find it?
The audit is posted on the county website, on the auditor's page, and I did not send an email. It would have come from the auditor's office. I'm not sure if, how it went out.
Other questions for Hope? Hope, thank you very much. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept and place that report on file? By Lorraine, seconded by Al Kertz. Uh, any discussion on that? Quiz.
I would just like to thank the county staff who have put the work in to keeping the books in such a state that we get such a clean audit report.
Absolutely. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, for the treasurer, uh, is there a motion to accept and place his report on file for June 2012 and July 2012? By John Jay, is there a second?
Second.
By Astrid, any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, I would like to ask for an omnibus motion on items two through five. They're all related to mobile home certificates of purchase, and you see them in your packet. Is there a motion to do so by Ralph? There's second by Jeff Kibler. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, I would like to ask for an omnibus motion on also related to deeds of conveyance issues on items six through 13. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
By, um, I'm sorry, by Lorraine, seconded by Stephanie Holderfield. Is there a discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is the auditor here? Is there a motion to accept his, uh, monthly report and place it on file? By John Schrader, seconded by Patsy. Discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up are amendments and transfers. First one is an amendment 12-31 for 13-648. It's public properties to reappropriate money paid due to overpayment from the grant for RPC for the Brookins lighting upgrades. Is there a motion for approval? By Geraldo, is there a second?
Second.
By Max. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, an amendment 12-32 for 30-5180. This is revenue neutral. Public liability insurance to receive insurance reimbursement for courthouse water damage. Motion for approval by Steve Mosier, seconded by John Jay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is an amendment 12-33. This is an appropriation of 4,500 and increased revenue of 4,851 to requ, the request is to complete the communication links that are necessary to complete the next phase of the functional operations of the county emergency operations center out of the EMA. Is there a motion for approval by Jan Anderson? Dis, uh, seconded by Stephanie. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The fourth item is an amendment 12-34 for 13-218 out of the state's attorney's office. This is to, uh, for the benefit payout of three employees leaving the employment in June of 2012 of Champaign County. Is there a motion for approval by Astrid? Seconded by? Anyone? Geraldo. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, an amendment 12-35 for 300 bucks out of the recorder's office to cover a shortage allowed for unemployment insurance line item. Motion for approval by Max, seconded by John Jay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, an amendment 12-36. This is an appropriation of 270,000, increased revenue of 300,000 out of the recorder's office to cover additional RHSP remittance for recording exceeding expected levels. Is there a motion for approval by Aaron, seconded by John? Discussion. Patsy.
Uh, I just want to know what RHSP stands for, please?
Rental housing support, something. It's like a rental housing support fee. I don't know what the fee is.
So P stands for something. Um, Astrid? All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, a transfer 12-10 out of court services for 54,065 to move money to correct budgets to pay for fiscal 11 and fiscal 12 salary increases due to FOP court services contract settlement. Is there a motion for approval by Stephanie? Is there a second? By Al Kertz. Discussion.
I would like to point out that we now have contracts with all of our employees. There are no open labor contracts.
That's very good news. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, out of the EMA, request approval of application and if awarded, acceptance of the annual Illinois Emergency Management Agency grant. Is there a motion for approval by Steve Mosier? Seconded by Quiz. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We deferred item number one out of the nursing home board of directors. Item number two is a request for approval of amendment to the MPA management contract for management of nursing home compliance program. Is there a motion for approval? Seconded by, I didn't say, oh, John Schrader, seconded by Al Kertz. Discussion. Discussion? Seeing none, all those...
Okay. So what's in the agenda packet is you're adopting an actual amendment to the MPA contract. And I had provided you with a memo that provided, that recommended a different alternative, which would be to treat this as a separate contract for one year and then review it for its continuation. I just want to make sure, because the motion is the amendment to the MPA contract that was presented to you in June, and that's fine if that's what you want. I just want to make sure that's what you want.
Astrid? Microphone, please, I'm sorry.
Is your version somewhere in the agenda?
It was a separate memo that came to you all on Friday, and there's a copy of it at your desk tonight.
But is it in the agenda? Or should we substitute it now or what?
You would need to substitute it.
Astrid, follow up.
I believe it will be substituted.
Is there a need for a motion? I don't, I don't think so. I think it's inherently substituted. And our parliamentarian is gone, but I would assume that there's no need to move that. I assume everyone would be okay with that, but if you want to, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next question. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, item number three is a request for approval for the release of an RFP for renal dialysis program. Is there a motion for approval?
No move.
By Al Kurz, seconded by Astrid. Discussion? Pius.
I just want to point out that if we approve this, this will cost the county nothing. It strictly is a request for information from companies that are willing to do this business for the county. So by saying yes now, we're not doing ourselves anything. The real question for that will come down the road after we get the information back from companies doing the...
Requesting proposals, yes. Other questions? Quiz.
Is this, is this a county RFP or is this a nursing home RFP?
This is an RFP that has been prepared by Management Performance Associates on behalf of the county.
So who, who's going to be active in reviewing the submissions for the, for the RFP? What group is going to do that?
MPA is what the assumption would be.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Lorraine.
Is this called an extra amount to get some revenue in?
Intended for increasing revenue. Correct? Yes. Jeff?
Hi, Scott. Can you, I have a question, a couple of questions for you, I think.
Scott, do you mind coming on up?
He's coming. Lorraine's question about increasing revenues, yes, but I think Scott will probably speak to it, but it is also, in addition to offering a service and increasing revenue, it will help to increase the Medicare census.
Great, thank you, Jan. Okay, Jeff?
First and foremost, it's, the underlying principle behind this is to increase Medicare days. I'm making that assumption. What other things did you consider to overall increase our Medicare days? Why this choice? Why did you bring this to the board for this particular choice versus other options?
With all the changes that are going on in the, in the healthcare environment, decrease reimbursement for Medicaid and Medicare, we have to make up those, that lost revenue somehow, and it has to be made up by volume. We're not going to get our Medicare rates back to where they were two years ago. So we have to make it up by either getting more Medicare or increasing our length of stay. So unfortunately for skilled nursing facilities, there's not a lot of additional programs options out there. You know, we're not like a hospital that can put together a bigger, better cancer program, recruit physicians. So it's like finding a single needle in a huge, huge haystack that we, that's out there. And renal dialysis is something that we looked at more than a year ago. So in terms of other options that would require capital investments to bolster our Medicare program, there really was no other alternative. That being said, we are looking at other, if you want to call it smaller, programs or services that we're looking at. I can tell you that just last evening with the Board of Directors, I let them know that I want to implement a respiratory therapy program that will be geared strict, not strictly, but primarily for Medicare residents, but also it will help our private pay and our Medicaid. That program has no capital, huge capital investment, but basically through the assistance of our current rehab company, we're going to get a respiratory therapist. And again, like dialysis, it will not be a specific revenue generator for us, but it'll be a service that we can offer to the public. We will market it to our discharge planners at the hospitals. No other nursing home in the county offers respiratory therapy services, but there are a ton of people who have pneumonia, congestive heart failure, COPD or emphysema that require respiratory therapy services in the skilled setting. So we think it will allow us to attract more Medicare. Renal dialysis is basically the same premise. Unfortunately, it requires a capital investment of some level, but we will not make money directly from renal dialysis. And in fact, as you will see in the write-up, we actually have to pay the dialysis provider a treatment fee of sixty-five dollars a treatment, and that's a standard practice. But with all those costs that we're going to incur, we're going to make that up by getting additional Medicare referrals from the hospitals. And so what we've been doing is testing the waters, talking to the discharge planners, talking with the physicians, and they all agree, including local nephrologists, that having a dialysis program in a skilled setting is a welcome service from the hospital and physician community. So our goal is to get more Medicare referrals, and that will cover, more than cover the costs according to our pro forma that we're seeing.
Other questions? Jeff, do you want to follow up?
I'll go around two.
Just a follow up. Go ahead.
That's, I think that's a fair thing. I think Medicare days, given especially our current census while we're above two-ten, that's, that's great, but you know, we're seeing an ever-increasing Medicaid population. So increasing our Medicare payment days is going to be a critical focus. So it sounds to me that, can you, can you also then describe how, if that's going to be our strong focus, why renal dialysis in our specific nursing home versus going to some other location is really the, the answer for these patients?
Well, one of the biggest issues that we have, we currently have two dialysis patients or residents at the facility. Most nursing homes will not take a substantial number of dialysis patients. And one of the primary issues is transportation, because right now they have to go to one of the local outpatient dialysis centers. They're either on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or a Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday schedule, and they're there for either three or four hours. And trust me, we can never get our dialysis patients to go to the dialysis center at the same time. So if we have four residents, one will go at eight o'clock on Monday, then another one at ten o'clock, et cetera, et cetera. The other two may be on the Tuesday, Thursday schedule. And when you couple that with all the other transportation issues that we're dealing with, sending, getting our people to physician visits, outpatient testing, whether it's a CT scan or MRI, it is a logistical nightmare for any nursing home, including CCNH. So one of the benefits is simply a convenience factor, that they can just go down the hall to the existing childcare area and get their dialysis. So for the resident, that transportation is a hu, I'm going to call it a huge inconvenience, but it is a quality of life issue for them, where instead of taking, you know, it may be a ten or fifteen-minute trip, but they're waiting at the front door for the bus to pick them up, they'll go to dialysis, sit in the waiting room for who knows how long, three or four-hour dialysis treatment is a very debilitating procedure. Now they're sitting there waiting to get picked up again, and they're basically gone practically the whole day. So the quality of life issues are improved tremendously. So from that perspective, if I'm a dialysis patient in the hospital and I have to go to a nursing home, and I know that CCNH has a dialysis program, without question, I believe I'm going to say they're going to be first on my list.
Patsy.
Thank you for the explanations. I do have a couple of questions. I've heard your explanations previously, and if Champaign County Nursing Home and MPA are smart enough to figure out this formula, I would assume other nursing homes would also be tracking along the same way. So what, what gives us the edge for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar investment of preparing the room, et cetera, et cetera, and put us to the tipping point of really making this an income generator for the nursing home?
It's hard for me to, to try to quantify or explain why no one else has jumped on board. All I can tell you is that MPA's philosophy has always been, you know, on one hand, we're going to complain about all the reimbursement issues that we have in the industry, but we're always looking for opportunities to make up those revenue losses or to get more revenue. And dialysis just has to be the one, and we were, we've basically been proactive in figuring out how we can implement this program as quickly and as cost-effectively pos, as possible. Now, we don't know exactly how this program is going to pencil out, and that's what the RFP process is for. So we have had informal discussions with three different vendors on how we could possibly put this program together. We used that information to put our pro forma together, and basically over the past few months, we believe that it passes the smell test because we've used very conservative estimates on volume projections. The numbers that you see there, we think that we can easily meet or exceed. So why, will anyone else jump on board? I can tell you that Champaigner Banner Rehab, Regional Rehab Center is going to start a dialysis program, but they're using a different piece of equipment called Next Stage, which is a home dialysis system. Now, we're going to be implementing a traditional dialysis system similar to what patients would get in the hospital. So we think the quality of our service is going to be superior to what CU RR is providing. And again, I have run this scenario by a couple of our vendors and also ran it, actually, I didn't run it, but our marketing person was talking with one of our doctors whose husband is a nephrologist here locally, and the comment that was made, unsolicited basically, was that the Next Stage dialysis program is not at the same level with what we're looking at.
I think one of the other advantages we have is we have space. We visited one of the dialysis units here in town, and we're, on Friday, we're going up to Chicago to visit a nursing home that actually offers dialysis to see how it works, but we already have space available. Many of the homes don't have the space, thus they're using a different type of hemodialysis. And the other thing, I mean, if you look at the disease patterns in the United States, sadly, there will be enough people who are on dialysis to go around. And if you look statistically, the, where we went, seventy percent of the cases, the kidney failure was a direct result of diabetes. And diabetes is an epidemic in this country, so everything is a risk, but I think again, we've got the space. We're going to offer in our home, and when we talk to the person at the CU Dialysis, we also may draw from other counties, because in Danville, this is not, is not offered. And if I have someone I love who needs dialysis, I would like to have them in a home where they don't have to be transported to and from a dialysis unit. So we may, I think in the end, be having people come from other counties.
So there are a few others that, that have questions, but before we continue, I want to remind that we're talking about, about getting an RFP out there and, and getting responses to that, and we have time to engage the Nursing Home Board, and we have time to engage Scott and MPA. So I just want to remind, before we get into extensive discussion tonight, that there's time to, to get more information. So I've got several on the block here, and I'll give you a chance, but I, I don't want this to go on forever. Astrid, then Stan, then Stephanie, then Quiz. Astrid.
I just wanted to notice the RFP results come to the Nursing Home Board.
Yes. Stan.
Mine's a three-parter. I heard you say a vendor, so there would be no new staffing added by the nursing home.
No, but part of the cost is there would be two transporters that would be employed by the dialysis center, and that would be a pass-through to the nursing home.
Okay. And then I'm sure that consideration's been given to whatever equipment you have to buy, the longevity of that equipment or the upkeep cost on that equipment, because that's always a big concern when I hear equipment's being bought, because if it fails, we have to have money available to go out and get another piece as soon as we need it, especially if we're tied into given treatments. And last but not least, is the liability issue when we take something like this on with any type of lawsuit or anything that might be mishandled that would come back to the county.
On the, the equipment issue, the capital costs are for the renovation of the existing daycare center. The actual dialysis equipment or anything related to dialysis will be provided by the vendor. So it'll be their cost for the upkeep of that particular equipment. So we've got room renovations, electrical work that needs to be done, and a substantial amount of that three-hundred-thousand-dollar estimate that we have is for plumbing, because you have to put in a water purification system. And we know that one of our vendors has already mentioned that there may be a viable alternative that will reduce and potentially substantially reduce that initial investment. So again, RFP is going to really flush all that information out. In terms of liability, liability in performing dialysis, that liability will be burdened by the dialysis company. So anything that happens during dialysis is their responsibility. But again, all those issues will be flushed out when we negotiate the contract with the vendor.
Stephanie.
I am a little concerned that you're basing the vast majority of your numbers solely on Medicare. There are six beds that are going to be available, and from what I can tell, you've mentioned Medicare more than you've mentioned Medicaid. And so I, in seeing these numbers and what you're intimating is Medicare part A, but how do we know for sure that it's going to be all Medicare recipients and not wind up being all Medicaid?
One of the vendors that we're looking at, based on their experience in having dialysis programs in the nursing homes, their historical statistics show that seventy-five percent of the residents being dialyzed are short-term Medicare, and the additional, the remaining twenty-five percent are private pay and Medicaid. Now, there is that risk that it could increase our Medicaid, but we think it's more than offset by the potential increase in Medicare. The other numbers that they provided to us, and they said it's conservative numbers from their perspective, is that within the first three or four weeks, they believe that our dialysis volume will be roughly twelve residents. When this program is up and running at full speed, and you have to forgive me that I forgot to ask exactly how many weeks or how many months that will take, but they say we could easily be doing sixteen to twenty-four in this market, because they've, they've done an analysis of this particular market in terms of volume that they could see. So again, in our pro forma, we had eleven total, of which six are Medicare, three are Medicaid, and two are private pay. So when we put this pro forma together, we thought we were being very conservative. And in terms of the, the actual dialysis unit, we are looking at putting into place six stations, so that's six distinct chairs or beds. Each chair can handle up to three or four dialysis treatments a day. So if you're on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, that's eighteen potential residents and another eighteen on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So the volume that we could handle is substantially more than twenty-four if, if we have that demand.
Next up is Quiz, then Gary, then Lloyd, and then back to round two or three. Quiz.
So this is kind of a follow-up to my first question, Astrid's comment, and Pius's commentary that we should realize that this is just an RFP. So MPA conducts the RFP, and they bring it to the Nursing Home Board. If, as Pius says, it's just getting information, when will... If, as Pius says, it's just getting information, when will it come back to this board to approve?
A recommendation for a contract, which is consistent with the policy.
Thank you.
Gary, then Lloyd, then back to Jeff. Gary?
I am, like Stephanie, quite concerned that we'll become the Medicaid provider for dialysis within the county. And, but I am willing to at least take a look at this thing, and I think we do need to go to the RFP.
Lloyd?
I wish I was fortunate enough to go to our nursing home, and I was glad it was there, because I provided service for you, because I couldn't have got the service at home. Wasn't anybody at home to give me that service. We have some things we could do to improve in nursing homes, but you need that nursing home. They're going to put you out of the hospital for a certain condition after your surgery that you have to recuperate, and you can't get to that home. Some people can go home and become ill, and they need to have to recover in a nursing home. And I just want to say, we need the nursing home, and I'm going to support keeping it in the nursing home, and anything approved to make the service better.
Jeff?
Two things within the RFP itself that I think needs addressed. One of them is brought up by Stan, too. First of all, of course, the administrators change, so we'll need to change the RFP to reflect that change. I assume it's going to go to MPA, or who should it be addressed to? I assume it's you, but you can figure that out. The second thing is, in terms of regulatory compliance, we talk about in it that they must have this level of insurance and whatnot. I would also like language in there, maybe a sentence that says, you know, you, you know, the onus will be on you for any regulatory compliance that comes down the line in the future, and that's in the RFP, so that way they know it and they can come to us knowing that full well. And I think they know that coming out, but I would like that language in there, too. So shall I request a motion to add that in?
It's noted.
Okay.
Very good. Anything, Ralph, microphone, please.
I just want to...
Microphone. Sorry.
Call the roll on the vote, please.
Any else for roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that. Are we ready? Okay. So this is to release an RFP for this program. Roll call, please.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Whistonberry?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Berksen?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Coort?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jay?
No.
Kibler?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
And McGinty.
Yes, that motion carries. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Mary Ellen. Appreciate it. Next up, State's Attorney's Request for Approval of DCFS Contracts, their motion for approval by Tom, seconded by Aaron. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. County Administrator Deb.
The General Corporate Fund projection report for June was in your packet, and the report for the month ending in July is at your desks. I'll refer to the one for the period ending in July, which is at your desks, although they don't change substantially. I think the good news is that our projections anticipate, even though there are some variances from month to month, but have consistently anticipated that we will end this fiscal year revenue positive, and that is good news. Basically, our revenues are holding fairly stable. The report for July is better than June's, and what improved in July was general government fees and fines, which was a good sign because they had been down. So that helps, too, with working towards projecting the fiscal 2013 budget. The greatest area of expenditure that we will underspend is basically in personnel, based on the current estimates. And overall, it looks on a projected basis like we will end the year about $370,000 positive, even after subtracting the loan which Ms. Schwartz referred to in public participation. That still puts us at a 13.2% ending fund balance, which nicely exceeds our goal of 12.5%.
Question, Stan.
Can you clarify a little bit on that loan for me, because I got a little confused based on what she was saying, that it's been paid off?
No. Well, I happen to agree with Ms. Schwartz. We have carried a loan that goes back to before 2008. It was the last loan made from the General Corporate Fund to the nursing home before MPA was hired and before we had the nursing home board of directors. And I have twice brought to you a request to forgive that loan and treat it as a grant as we did with nearly $2 million of other loans that were made from General Corporate to the nursing home, but the board has not wanted to do that. So that's why this still shows up as a loan. At the same time, the nursing home has been, since 2010, paying the debt service for the $4 million bond issue, which is otherwise backed by the one cent general sales tax in the General Corporate Fund. So, you know, the nursing home has been saving the General Corporate Fund $300,000, thereabouts, in 2010, 2011, and now will again do that in 2012 by paying that debt service. So I think what Ms. Schwartz was saying is, you know, maybe for one year, you could forgive the loan instead of, or have them consider that they're paying back the loan instead of paying the debt service.
Deb, if I may, the reason, if I remember correctly, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, that we carry this is, from an accountability standpoint for the nursing home, that this board felt that it was important to remind the home and the administration that the situation existed before. This is one way to do that, to remind them that this loan continues to exist on our books. Whether that's useful or not, maybe we can revisit at some point, but I think that was the reasoning.
I believe that was the board's reasoning. This loan is something that you do have to revisit every year because, logistically, these inter-fund loans are not supposed to occur unless it is anticipated that they will be repaid within 12 months, and this one has not been.
Yep.
In my mind, I guess, if you loan someone $300,000 and they already had a debt service and they're paying on that debt service, wouldn't that $300 and some add to that debt service? Then that balloons that debt they owe? I mean, I'm getting lost in the...
Yes.
I call it shuffle, but in my mind, you're saying, basically, in one sense, well, they've been paying, and it's helping us on the sales tax, but if I loan you $300,000 and you owed me a million, and you're paying me on that million, you still owe me that other $300,000 somewhere.
That's why you're still carrying this. That's been the decision that the board has been made, that the board has made. Correct.
So it's just terminology, I guess, and I'm getting confused.
Well, they're really two different issues. You know, when we reached the point in the construction project that we needed $4 million more than what the voters had approved because of the problems with the construction process, the board had no choice but to issue that money to complete the construction project, and the only way the board could do that was with general fund revenues. So, but since 2010, you know, the nursing home has agreed to take on that responsibility since it was for the facility that they operate from.
Okay, thank you. Now, if I may, just, this is maybe a good opportunity to do this, just to be clear on the numbers that we're talking about here, because we talk about what's owed here. Deb, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the real numbers here are that we service about $1,004,000 each year on the building, and about $1 million on the operation through the taxpayers. When we see, like in today's paper, the budget which went through last night at the nursing home board, about $100,000 deficit, $99,000. In reality, it's from a self-sustaining, because we talk about the home being able to sustain itself, its own operation, we're really talking about that $99,000 being one piece of it, that it's subsidized every year to another $2.4 million. I want to be clear on that, that the numbers that we see, you know, that this is what makes it a government home, that we help from a standpoint of $2.4 million annually because of the building, because of the operation, and the deficit in that operation. And so when we hear break even and making money, I think that it's important to have the correct perspective when we talk about that. Am I incorrect there? Am I close?
Well, I would say that the voters of this county elected to pay $2.4 million a year in 2002 towards the Champaign County Nursing Home.
I bring this up because what I hear from many people is, and what I read, is what is break even and what is not. You're making money. Well, it depends on how you look at it. And that's my point there, that there is a subsidy that's happening, that this is not an operation that otherwise would stand on its own without the $2.4 million that we give it to be in the facility that has to do the operation that it does. That break even is relative to that $2.4. Astrid.
Some counties have just county functions, so we don't make a lot of money on the jail either.
Completely understand. I'm just bringing up because it has been a topic that has been out there. Deb, please continue.
The budget change report didn't change because you didn't meet last month, so that's in your packet. And then, just for your information, a letter regarding the public health levy for fiscal 2012.
Is there a motion to accept those two reports and place on file by Max, seconded by Stan? Any discussion on them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is a budget amendment 12-38 for $24,000 to repair the roof at the downtown correctional facility. Is there a motion for approval by Gary? Is there a second by Quiz? Discussion on that. Patsy.
Well, I need quite a bit of explanation on this because I thought when we had the conversation with Alan Reinhardt that it was laid out for him to come back to us with three different scenarios on things that needed to be done to the correctional center, and now we're getting piecemeal again, and I can't support piecemeal any longer. We piecemeal, then we silo, and you could keep coming back with $25,000, $25,000, and then we're at $100,000, and we can go beyond that, and we keep approving these things without any big picture of what's going to be happening.
I understand that that was your perspective. However, what Alan and I heard at the board meeting, that board members were interested in projects that would improve the operation of the county jail, and that could be done yet this fiscal year. Well, this is one that Alan has all the information for, has already has quotes, and if we got started this month, we would be able to take care of this this year, so that's how this is, that's why this is being presented at this time.
Tom.
I agree with what Deb used to just said. That was the nature of Mr. Alex's motion when he made it. The other reality is, over the next four or five, maybe six years, we are going to be doing some piecemeal work on these facilities until we resolve the other issues. Things happen, leaks occur, you're going to have to deal with those issues. That's why we have this ongoing jail assessment issue, but there's no way that either one of those facilities is disappearing and are not going to have to require a lot of maintenance and upkeep over the next few years, regardless of what we do.
Ralph?
I would like to observe, when the roof leaks, you either fix it or buy umbrellas.
John, then Steve.
Thank you. Irregardless of our emotional feelings, there's a few of us on this board have hammered and hammered that we need to take care of our facilities. This isn't going to make it beautiful, this isn't going to make it last forever. It's something that needs to be done, we have the ability to do it, let's get it done. And let's keep doing this, though, by the way, a little at a time.
Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you. John pretty much covered it. I don't consider this piecemeal maintenance, it's necessary maintenance. It's not a piecemeal expenditure by any means.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number five is also an amendment 12-37 for $11,000. This is facilities out of State's Attorney's space to add reception window for support of the enforcement reception areas. Our motion for approval by Max, seconded by Al Kurtz. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lorene, I'm sorry, did you, I couldn't tell.
I was going to ask for the government...
Microphone, please, Lorene. Oh, thank you. And thank you, Lloyd. Sorry about that. Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
I tried to get you, but...
Got you.
I was going to ask for the government and State's Attorney, but...
No, the State's Attorney doesn't have a budget, and this is actually a change to the facility, so the auditor would require for us to pay for it out of a facility's budget. It is being recommended, this budget amendment is to take it out of the capital facilities budget, where there are revenues set aside for facilities improvements.
Would that have affected your vote? Because I'm going to go ahead and let that first vote stand, is that all right? Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business for finance? There's no chairs report. The items for consent are under B, 2 through 5 and 6 through 13, D, all of the items, 1 through 7, E1, nothing under F, G1, and only H5. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Up next is Policy Personnel Appointments with Mr. Whistonberry.
Good evening. We have a lot of appointments to go through, so I am going to entertain omnibus motions where appropriate. However, the first one is the appointment for the Developmental Liberties Board. Any motion?
I nominate Mr. Michael Smith for term ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Betts. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. The next one is for the Windsor Park Fire Protection District.
I nominate Mr. Todd Courtney for a term ending April 30, 2013.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion passes. Next, East Lawn Memorial Park, or Memorial Burial Park Association. Aye.
I nominate M. Jean Mannan for term ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schrader. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, now, we have a whole bunch of drainage districts, so I would entertain a motion, an omnibus motion for, it looks like we could go maybe 4 through 32. Go move.
I would ask that you leave out number 28.
With the exception of 28. Mr. Jay, is that okay?
That is fine.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Only the chairman of the board can make that motion.
Okay.
I would request an omnibus motion for items number 4 through 27, 29 through 32, number 34, and the one on the agenda, which is number 38.
Second.
Mr. Jay, seconds. All right. Well, let's, would you like to have one of them withheld?
No, number 7 is omitted, and I might shoot at the bottom.
It's on the next page.
Paul Burbound?
Great.
All right. Pius?
I need a vote on this. Need to vote.
Well, let's, would you like to have one of them withheld?
No, number 7 is omitted. I might shoot at the bottom.
Paul Burbout? All right, Pius.
I need a vote on this. Need to vote. Omnibus motion.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the omnibus motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
All right, very good. All the terms end to August 31, 2015 unless I otherwise mention. For the Beaver Lake Drainage District, Lyle Brock. Blackford Slough Drainage District, Jack Murray. Conrad and Fisher Mutual Drainage District, Delmar Banner. Scott Drainage District, number 2, Paul Burbout. Fallon Head District, Charles Green Jr. Long Branch Mutual Drainage District, Rick Wolken. Lower Big Slough Drainage District, Beverly Hanks. Nelson Moore Fairfield Drainage District, John Nelson. Oakodrainage District, Gerald Henry. Owl Creek Drainage District, Leonard Stocks. Posotum Consolidated, Douglas Reinhardt. Posotum Slough Special Drainage District, Jeffrey Little. Rob Drainage District, Kevin Wolken. Sangman and Drummer Drainage District, Steve Day. Silver Creek Drainage District, Mervyn Olson. South Fork Drainage District, Reggie Peters. South Fork Drainage District, Glenn Loffenhagen. Loffenhagen, thank you, Mr. Moser. St. Joseph, number 3, Lloyd Esri. St. Joseph, number 4, Dale Busboom. Triple Fork Drainage District, David Wolken. Union Drainage District of Stanton and Ogden, Lynn Hall's. Union Number 1 Drainage District of Philo Crittenden and Max Franks. Union Number 1 Drainage District of Philo and Urbana, Edward Decker. Union Drainage District Number 2 of St. Joseph and Ogden, Daniel Mills. Upper Umbra River Basin Drainage District, Donald Maxwell. West Branch Drainage District, Richard Peebler. Willa Ranch, Charles Steffi. RIS Drainage District, Francis Loffenhagen. And Union Drainage District Number 3 of South Homer and Sidney, Kevin Winkie. And Prairie Creek Drainage District, Keith Harms. I point out that the Kevin Winkie from Union Drainage District Number 3 of South Homer and Sidney is an on-expired term ending August 31, 2013. An I sub move.
Second by Tom. Any discussion on that long list? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That passes. And now, back to number 28. Pius.
Thank you. For Union Drainage District Number 3 of South Homer and Sidney for term ending August 31, 2015, I nominate Greg Allen. Also, I'll also point out that, or include in the nomination, that to waive the requirements of the appointing of land in the district, an I sub move.
Second by Steve Moser. Pius, discussion.
I asked for the waiver of the land-owning requirement because we've had no other applications, and Mr. Allen, his father, who's just got off Drainage District, farmed land in the area, and Mr. Allen farmed that land, and presumably will be getting, farming that land in the future after his father passes away. They'll probably own it, too.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That passes as well. Okay, back to.
Number 33, I believe.
Number 33. That's just for information only. Paul Dome has resigned from the Union Drainage District Number 3, South Homer and Sidney. And then Forest Preserve District.
For the term ending June 30, 2017, I nominate Philip Holt.
Second. Second by Stan James. Any discussion?
I have a question.
John.
Actually, it's not a question, Mr. Quisenberry. It's a couple of things. It's good to see someone from Mohammed be appointed to Forest Preserve District as a former board director member. It's always something, since it's headquartered there in Mohammed, it's good to have that representation there. And I'm not going to make an issue out of it, period. But I think if Mr. Holt could, there's an error in his application. It's obvious what he's applying for and everything, but I think his application needs to be cleaned up. And that's in the name of the appointing body or board, and it should be the Champaign County Forest Preserve Board. So, Mr. Chair, if you get that cleaned up, or have Mr. Holt clean that up.
All right, further comment?
I would point out that Mr. Holt actually does not live in Mohammed, but he has a Mohammed address. He lives north of Mohammed, a couple miles. So he's from there.
Very good. Someone from, Stan corrected, someone from the Mohammed area. Thank you.
All right, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, and Forest Preserve District Board, number 36.
For an expired term ending June 30, 2015, I nominate Andrew Kearns.
Second. Second by Tom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, now, for the Farm Land Assessment Review Committee.
Actually, it turns out that if the chair of the Board of View wants to be on the committee, they are automatically on the committee. If they, the only important member is the chair of the Board of View does not want to be on the committee. So this case, the chair, who's Elizabeth Brechner Patton, is willing to be on the committee, so therefore it's strictly an announcement. So that's by law, she can be on the assessment.
So do we need to take an action?
No action needed. Only if she does not want to, and another board member would be on it.
All right. So moving on, Section B.
Question.
Yes, Patsy.
Is this a three-member committee, and who are the other two members?
Pius.
It's a five-member committee. Stan Jenkins is on it, and I know Mr. Motors is on it, but who are the two other farmers?
Ray Burn.
And their terms, I think, are four or five, four-year terms, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the county clerk. You have the June and July 2012 reports. Any questions for the clerk who we have sitting over there?
Who may he please respond to?
Okay, second. Mr. Kurtz. Any other discussion or questions about the reports? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. Okay, we have a resolution on polling place for City of Champaign, number 4. Second by Tom, seconded by Al again. Any discussion? Mr. Kurtz.
Yeah, Courtney, would you come up and just explain why you want to make that move? We've already discussed it, but I'd like you to share it with the board, please.
Absolutely, thank you. This is City of Champaign 4. As the memo says, their normal polling place, their previous polling place has been Snyder Hall Lounge. Those of you familiar with campus understand that that part of campus has undergone a significant amount of construction and renovation over the past couple of years. There is an incredibly beautiful new facility down there called the Student Residential and Dining Programs Building, and it is now the central dining hall, computer lab, recreational area for all of the University of Illinois dormitories in that precinct. And so rather than have the lounge in one dormitory serve all of the dormitories, we're going to use the central facility that all the students go to every day anyway for their meals as the polling place. It's much more visible, much more centrally located, easier to secure, and just frankly, a much nicer building. Mr. Chair.
Isn't this what used to be called in the middle of the six-pack? I know that's a term I'm not supposed to use.
It's the six-pack, yeah. And this building is right down by Ark. I think it's actually across the street from the precinct, but everybody who lives in a residential facility that lives in that precinct, which is the vast majority of voters in that precinct, goes to this building at least once a day if they'd like to eat.
It's not recommended that you come in your car, though, because there aren't too many places to park.
I park at Ark when I go.
Any other discussion or questions for the clerk? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Now we have a resolution approving the appointment of election judges for November 2012 election, which has been floating around, and I assume everybody has checked every name on there so that they're ready to. Move by Tom Betts. Second by Astrid. All right, discussion. Patsy.
Mr. Holden.
Is doing this just pro forma because of a statute?
Well, I don't know that it's pro forma, but it is required by statute. The assignment and selection of election judges in Illinois under state law is actually the responsibility of the political parties, not my office. Over the years, because it is an incredible amount of work to find and convince people to serve and train them, a lot of the responsibility has fallen to our office, but we still work closely with both political parties. And this is one of the checks that are inherent in Illinois election law to make sure that county clerks don't abuse the authority that they have in terms of administering elections. So we prepare a list of election judges that are assigned to each precinct in the correct ratios as specified by law, and we send it to our political party chairs after they're elected, after their party conventions every other spring. They spend six or eight weeks with it. They make some changes. You'll notice the Democratic Party made a number of changes, the Republican Party didn't make any. They sign it, send it back to us. You are then required to approve it, or hopefully you will approve it. Then it goes to the circuit court, and then for November, we can then contact all these people and ask them to serve.
Thank you.
All right, further questions? Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Now we have a request for approval to submit three county clerk office positions for reevaluation by Job Content Evaluation Committee. Moved by Tom. Second. Seconded by Brendan. Corey, would you like to explain a little bit about why you're asking, please?
Sure. We have a number of positions in our office that the job descriptions, the position descriptions have become outdated with the functions that the folks are actually performing now, especially as we continue to reorganize and streamline and hopefully improve the efficiency of the office. This request is for the Job Content Evaluation Committee to take a look at three positions. Technology Specialist, who is sort of our in-house IT troubleshooter person, who is a frontline person to make sure that we don't become too much of a burden on the IT department. This person is also responsible for our election system programming, a lot of our equipment maintenance, and their position description just hasn't been up to date. And so we've updated it, and we're asking the Job Content Evaluation Committee to take a look at whether or not that updated position description and updated responsibilities requires a reevaluation, reclassification of the position. Other two positions are similar. They are the Lead Tax Extension Specialist. If any of you know Sasha Green in my office, she is a critical cog in the property tax cycle in Champaign County, and in my opinion, she is the best tax extender in the state of Illinois. She's widely recognized as such, and she has accumulated an incredible amount of responsibility over the years. So we've updated her responsibilities as well as the requirements for the position should, God forbid, something ever happened to Sasha. And then the third position is Senior Election Specialist. Over the last six years, but last couple of years especially with the implementation of all of the federal mandates related to voting and voting compliance and military and absentee and all of those things, our senior election specialists are bearing a great deal of responsibility for compliance with all of those requirements, and we wanted to update the position descriptions to make that clear.
Corey, are any of these positions represented by a bargaining unit?
Technology Specialist is not. Lead Tax Extension Specialist and Senior Election Specialist are both bargaining positions.
All right, discussion. Questions? Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, county administrator reports.
It's in your packet for your information. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move we place on file.
Moved by Al.
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any questions? Mr. Jay.
I got a question for Deb. Are, Deb, are we falling behind in our technology-capable people overall as a county? I noticed tonight in a couple of instances, our technology was not challenged, but maybe we're not up to snuff. Is that a problem that we're going to be facing?
It's always a challenge. We've never had the staff that, you know, would typically be recommended for an operation the size of Champaign County, and we've been constrained fiscally from adding staff. So it's a challenge. I believe our IT department is, at this point in time, holding its own, but certainly the comments from the outside auditor regarding the accounting system are a concern, a serious concern to our IT department because we have, you know, $110 million annual budget resting basically on an accounting program software system that was developed in-house, you know, 40 years ago, and we have one person who can maintain it, and many people will tell you that if anything happens to him, they're concerned about what happens to, and it's just not the accounting system, it's also the real estate property tax cycle system as well. Those two systems.
All right, Brendan.
Deb, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I remember us talking about this before, and I think it's a good perspective for what Chief's question was. Typical to our size, IT department. I mean, I think I know the answer, but could you tell me about what we've got versus what the typical is? And this is just for perspective about how stretched we are.
We have eight, and I think a typical recommendation would be that we should have in the range of 14 to 17 IT employees. We serve over 600 PCs a day. You know, we, it's a substantial undertaking to keep IT just up and running. There's not any ability really for development to speak of because it takes all of them every day just to keep it up and running, very similar to public properties and maintaining the 11 facilities that the county owns.
May I have a quick follow-up, just very quickly? As a reminder to the board, and especially the new members, we did an IT audit. Maximus came in, made a series of recommendations that were terrific, and many probably still applicable, but we do not have the financial resources to implement many of their recommendations. But we do have on file a report from them that, if you haven't seen it, is probably pretty good reading for what we could be doing. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to add to that, the comments about the audit with regard to IT. Those are risk management items. I mean, you are now informed as a board as to things that are questionable within our system and what those risks might be. We can choose to adopt a budget that supports dealing with those, or we can accept the risk. So it's on us to deal with those questions. That might be a little bit off-topic, but I'm sitting in the chair seat, but we'll stick to it. All right, moving along. Oh, wait, we need to vote on that, on those reports. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, moving into other business. We have a motion regarding the approval establishment of county board member terms, and it's been noted that there is a discrepancy between what you may have in your packet and what I have in front of me here. If you look on the second page.
Page 201.
Of the ordinance. Section D, item 2, the second line, that should read 2. So the candidate with the second lowest lot number of the two, or his or her successor, shall be elected in four years and again in eight years.
And Pius's signature should be C.
And, yeah, everybody knows that Pius's signature starts with a C.
Brendan, one more time.
Section II, Section II of Section D should read, "The candidate with the second lowest lot number of the two, or his or her successor, shall be elected in four years and again in eight years."
That's under item.
Can I have a motion? Move approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Brendan, seconded by Ralph. Okay, Stan, your question.
Oh, I was just letting someone know where it was. I rarely have a question.
Right. Tom, did you get your concern resolved?
I have no stake in this.
Spoken like a short timer. Lloyd.
Is that any different? Have you been doing it in the past?
Yes, it is very different because we've had different districts with three people in them, and so the form.
Is that any different than, we've been doing it in the past?
Yes, it is very different, because we've had different districts with three people in them, and so, the formula has been more complicated. This is actually a lot simpler. In the past, we had to determine which districts, we had two people who would start out with four-year terms, and one person with two-year terms in some districts. And then in other districts, we had a person with, two people with four-year terms, and one person with a two-year term. This is, we only have two people in each district at this point. So, one of them's going to get a two-year term, and one of them's going to get a four-year term.
Three years.
Two or four.
Well, that's what.
So, you, if you get the two-year term, you're going to have to run again in two years.
We can go in there.
That's right.
For each individual, it'll feel the same, but, but how we lay it out over the whole, the whole county board has changed.
I have had two-year terms, and I have had four-year terms.
Right. That's the same, but there's only two of you in the district now, instead of three. So, how it gets distributed, who gets which terms, is going to have to change.
I would play the slowest.
All right. Further discussion or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, that passes. Moving on, we're going to now conduct a mock drawing to illustrate how this will go down at the county, full county board meeting, where we will conduct the actual drawing. And the reason why we have to do this, do you mind if I explain? By statute, we have to determine who would get which term before September 1st. We're required by statute to do that. So, we have to have this process that recognizes that there could be four, maybe more candidates in each district.
Correct.
With write-in candidates, and how we can select, we draw these lots to determine which one's going to get the two, and which one's going to get the four. And no matter what the outcome of the multiple candidates, this will solve the question of who stays around longer and who doesn't. Correct?
Who stays around long.
Okay. So, what we're going to do now, we're going to do a demonstration of what will happen to the next county board meeting, and it's next week. So, this is strictly a demonstration. I think that Gordy will be the, holding the hat next week, but the person picking out the names probably, I'll, I'll consult with the chairs of the, of the Republican and Democratic Party to see if they want to do it, or if they want to sign somebody else to do it. Do you want to explain this, she's here?
Sure. We've, we've created materials for dummy county board district number 13. I have lots for two, you'll, I have lots for, I have lots for two Democratic candidates, two Republican candidates, and two potential write-in candidates. In every district, when we do this drawing for real, at the full county board meeting, we will draw two lots for write-in candidates, because the deadline to run as a write-in candidate isn't until September 6th. So, even if there are no write-in candidates currently filed in any of the county board districts, there is the potential for someone to file as a write-in candidate even after we conduct the drawing. So, this would represent a maximum scenario of two Democratic Party candidates, two Republican Party candidates, and two write-in candidates in any given district. We will draw them. Pius will do the drawing tonight. I'll hold the hat. We will record the order in which they are drawn, and then the resolution explains what the order means. So, let's do the drawing, and we'll plug the candidate names in, and then explain what the resolution says that means.
Okay. For number one. Nicholas Grant, Republican.
Nicholas Grant.
Number two. Abraham Lincoln, Republican. Number three. Write-in candidate number one.
It will make sense, Patsy, I promise.
Number four. Write-in candidate number two.
This is rigged.
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
I'm not drawing.
Number five. Thomas Jefferson, Democratic Party. Number six, Lyndon LaRouche. No, Andrew Jackson, Democratic Party.
So, what we now have is a ranking by random chance of each of the candidates and potential candidates in a given district. And the resolution that you just adopted, or preliminarily adopted, says that the winning candidate with the lower lot number will get the two-year term, and then a four-year, and then a four-year. And the winning candidate with the higher lot number will get the four-year term, four-year term, two-year term. So, for example, if Abraham Lincoln and Thomas Jefferson were to win in this district in November, Abraham Lincoln, his lot number is two. Thomas Jefferson, his lot number is five. Thomas Jefferson's lot number is bigger, would get the four-year term to start with. Abraham Lincoln's lot number is two, it is smaller, would get the two-year term to start with. So, in each district, at the full county board meeting, we will do a drawing of the currently filed candidates plus two write-ins, and we will do a random lot assignment in each district. And then on election night, when you win or lose, you will know whether your lot number is larger or smaller than the other candidate who won in the district. And so, you will know on election night whether you have a two-year term or a four-year term. Mr. Carter?
That's about right. Would be the amount of votes in the candidate's suite.
We're not allowed to base terms on, on the leading vote getter or second-leading vote getter.
Yeah. To me, that's what we've been living with for years.
That is not how this board has operated previous organizations.
Are we going to have 11 hats?
What moves?
Eleven sets.
No, right now, what is that?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what are the lots? If you're not using votes, what are the lots?
The lots will be the names of, of the candidates.
So, that'd be how they appear on the ballot?
No, it would just be, each lot is a name of a candidate.
Your, your lot number is what position you've got drawn out of the hat.
So, in your district, we will do a drawing with your name, Mr. Carter's name, write-in candidate number one, write-in candidate number two. When, the order in which those lots are drawn will be the order in which you're recorded in the minutes for the meeting, and that will be your lot number. So, if your name is drawn first, you will have lot number one.
That means, that means.
Next week, you'll know whether you're going to serve a two-year term or a four-year term. You'll find out at the county board meeting next week, assuming you both get elected.
Mr. Motors.
So, why haven't we done this for the last 10 years or 20 years? Every, every time we, O'Connor and I ran, we had to go up there and draw something out of the hat after we got sworn in.
I don't, all I know is what the minutes say, and in 2002, this was done in August of 2002, not at the organizational meeting in December of 2002. The, the actual lot drawing is recorded in the minutes of the August 2002 county board meeting. And I know county board members who were here remember it very differently, but that's what the minutes say.
Steve. That means that you're going to know when you run, whether you're a two or a four when you go into the election booth.
Only if you're on a post.
Because Steve's exactly right. We didn't know whether we were a two, four-four, or a four-four-two till after we.
You also had, you also had.
After we were in our chair at the meeting, then we drew.
You also had three candidates per district 10 years ago, so it was considerably more complicated.
Mr. McGinty.
My training as finance chair tells me that we should call the question.
I don't believe we have a question. This is for informational purposes only. But we, but we do have one more thing. Ralph can ask one.
Is it possible?
No. In fact, an attempted bribe has been made. I won't name the county board member. Will have no influence on the drawing. A dime.
All right. So.
How's that fly as my question?
No, you may not, you're not allowed to swap. The statute says that this has to be done by random drawing. You're not allowed to choose. To me, the process that makes the most sense is when you filed your petitions. Last year, you chose a term, but statute doesn't allow for that.
Would a court or work?
All right. We have, we have one more thing on the agenda here. So, with your permission, I'm going to move ahead to a proposed change of the date of the November 2012 county board full meeting from Thursday, November 29th, 2012, to Tuesday, November 27th, 2012. Aaron moves. Stan seconds. Can we have an explanation for why we're moving the date?
Primary reason is for, the organizational meeting is on Monday, so there's very little time to prepare, to get things done, the county board meeting, and then prepare for the organizational meeting, which, as Tom mentioned, is a big, is important meeting. And also, my wife is having surgery that day, so if we have it on Thursday, I won't be here to cha, to chair it. It is my life, and I'll be there for that.
I would also add that you adopt the budget at the November meeting, and November 30th is the last day of the current fiscal year. It gives us very little time to actually get everything in place for December 1st. At least this way, we have a couple extra days.
Yes, we're already deferred a week because of Thanksgiving.
Right.
All right. Lloyd, you have a question?
Well, why, that's what's considered as people more busy, relative to Thanksgiving and getting back.
I think most people, well, that, I don't know if that's been considered, but a lot of people travel the week of Thanksgiving rather than the week after.
This is after Thanksgiving. I mean, is anybody here planning to be traveling after Thanksgiving as of now?
Anybody have a conflict with that in their schedule? All right. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. See that? Passes. Chairs report. I am, I am going to say something. I know, I noticed that Pius earlier mentioned that the Republican caucus was asked about the proclamation that was discussed in public comment earlier. But the, but the Democratic caucus was asked as well, and I, I can say, as a member of this board for the last two years, I believe we have been fairly consistent about not taking on proclamations. And in fact, the last time we had one, there was much discussion about the fact that we, we shouldn't spend the county's time on every request for approval that comes along like that. And so, I would, I would suggest that had anybody else that was, that the speaker said, had asked for a proclamation, I think they would have met the same result of not being on the agenda. So, I think we've been consistent there. And with that, I think we're done.
Designation.
For the consent agenda, I have A1, A2, A3, and then do you put the things together that are on the list? So, there, those are all on consent, and everything's on consent.
I don't think Jay Milligan can give you one on the consent.
The ordinance?
We actually have to modify this.
Right. Right. We got, we add the numbers, so.
So, D1 won't be on consent because it has to. All right. Then we're, we're done.
Okay. No, we have one more thing. Nice try, Mr. Quisenberry. Other business, we are seek approval of the June 12th, 2012 community hall closed session minutes, which you have just reviewed.
Approval.
For Mr. Carter, seconded by Mr. McGinty. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.